Good afternoon, everyone. This is Jana Martella. I am the Chair of the Highscope Board of Directors. Have just come from a meeting of the Board of Directors, actually, to join this book study. This particular book study is on language justice focusing on diverse language learners. We are going to host a discussion with researchers, practitioners, and tie it to our previous two sessions in the book study on "Don't Look Away: Embracing Anti-Bias Classrooms." I'd like to thank all of you for your attendance today. And I'd also like to give a big shout out to Ingrid Justice and Katie Bruckner of the Highscope staff. They are the technical supporters, thought partners in this series, and have done a great job making all of us moderators, speakers, presenters comfortable in this environment, this webinar, virtual environment that I know you all are living in on a daily basis. So we want to kind of highlight that this is our third study, our third session in "Don't Look Away." And we are going to specifically focus on and explore research that supports culturally responsive anti-bias education for children whose first language is not English. The authors of "Don't Look Away" were focused on end-of-year academic requirements. And so some great researchers, then a practitioner, have stepped up to the plate to join us. In addition, I'll be introducing Alejandra, who was to be our moderator from the very beginning. So thank you so much for being here. And perhaps we can move on to the next slide. And I will remind everybody, actually, where's my book? I have it here. I have read through it several times and have taken a look. At some point, check the chat box. We will enter where you can find "Don't Look Away." We encourage all of our participants to consider taking a deep dive into this very useful and informative resource for practitioners and for others. And remind you that we're actually going to be delving into its chapters, talking to additional experts and the researchers who wrote the book for the coming four months. So please do join us. You can find where to register on the Roundtable site where you registered for this session as well. But for today, I would like to give a very short shout out to the individuals who are going to be joining us in discussion. We will be hearing from Keomi Colgrove from Texas State University. I'm not going to spend very much time here because we'll point you and allow them also to spend a little time on who they are. Ana Valeria Gonzalez is a teacher in the San Antonio ISD school district, in particular within a hub that uses the Highscope curriculum. We'll talk a little bit about Ana Valeria, certainly. Alejandra is the new president. I will be introducing her first new president of Highscope. We'll tell you a little bit about her background and expertise, and we will hear from her. And I'm delighted and thankful to engage Gloria Corral. We just came from our board meeting with Alejandra. And Gloria and I have been colleagues on the Highscope Board for a number of years. And Gloria will also bring to her response to our speakers today her engagement with a national organization that serves children in the San Diego area, but across California as well. So I know that you are looking forward to hearing from them. Next slide, please. We wanted to give you a little bit of background on why this topic is so important and such an important component around anti-bias teaching and learning. And I thought that this slide gave a perfect picture, really, of what we already know are the changing demographics for the country writ large. And I actually should not exclude the idea, and I'm quite certain that we have some folks from overseas as well, from some of our international institute partnerships and others. So we'll have a lot to say about language. If you can go on to... Well, let me point out that these numbers go and kind of present the great changes that we all are very familiar with. And in a moment, we'll explore how familiar our audience is in these statistics. But recognizing, as we have heard, that by 2050, almost a third of the population of young children in the United States, and the United States writ large, will be non-English native speakers. And in addition, people of color will constitute the majority of Americans. This is an important context to keep in mind. Let's go on to the next slide, please. With that in mind, we would like to ask the audience a little bit about you. And so we have a poll for you that we're going to pull up. And Katie, if you'll do that for us. There are four questions on the poll. And we would like you to respond to all four questions. So you'll need to scroll down on the poll here. You can see some of you are already answering. Thank you. What is your role in the early childhood world? What is your first language? We only gave you teacher, provider, director, principal, coach, or other. And realize that other may be a big space there, but hopefully you'll be able to respond to that. Also, what is your first language? And we put "other" on top, assuming that it isn't. It might not necessarily be English. And we didn't want to exclude other languages beyond Spanish as well. So third, for those of you that are leaders, directors, practitioners, teachers, providers, if you could tell us what percentage of children in your settings are themselves diverse language learners? And finally, a final question, which I hope our researcher Alejandra and Ana Valeria can address a little bit, is whether your program itself offers bilingual education? Okay, the polls in progress will give you plenty of time. There's still a lot of you that haven't filled out or weighed in. We are not to... I don't want to alarm our speakers. We're at about 500 strong, maybe a little longer, a little larger than that. And we might be expecting others as well. But we want to give you a full opportunity to respond to the poll. All right. So Katie, thank you. You've pulled up the poll results, and let's take a look. So of everybody within the audience, the majority of you are teachers or providers. This is good information for our presenters today. For our conversants, there are about 11% of you are either directors of centers or principals of your schools. Some of you provide technical assistance, are coaches. And then about 20% of you are other. That could be policymakers. So thank you for joining us. I think that we're pretty on target for an adult audience, right? There is 7% of the group highlighted that their first language is a language other than English and not Spanish. So if you wouldn't mind, folks, those of you that responded to that, if you would kind of show us a little bit of the diversity, the folks who said that their first language was something other than English or Spanish, you might insert that, if you feel comfortable, into the chat box. That will give us a little bit of additional information. So, and I also see that many of you are kind of discussing what your role is a little further in the chat box as well. So we have some Arabic speakers and Hindi speaker. First language is Urdu, Portuguese, Amarek, Tagalog, Farsi. Great, thank you. Tamil, Kurdish. I didn't ask folks what their second language might be. So... Third language, English. Thank you. Keep it up. Keep... Feel... Please feel free to add that to the chat box. We'll be saving this information as well. So about 14%, close to, you know, a little more than 50, responded that Spanish is your first language. So that is the largest diverse language in the mix. Thank you. What percentage of children in your setting are diverse language learners? And so it is really surprising, right? There are more than 24% of you, almost a quarter of you, suggest that 11 to 25% of your children are diverse language learners. And then more than a quarter of you, 138, 36% and counting, highlight that your children, more than a quarter of your children are diverse language learners. And most impressive, actually, is that almost half of you indicate that your program offers bilingual education. So all of our discussants, in a little bit, I think this is really useful information. And we'll actually keep that in mind as we respond to some questions. So thank you. Thank you, Katie, for moving on to the next slide. We do want to highlight that there are some things that we know about young diverse learners in addition to the fact that there are a whole lot of them and that they are in our programs, as we've seen. They are large and diverse and a growing part of our population. It is estimated that better than a third of children aged 0 to 8 across America are diverse language learners and are obviously learning English in the mix. We definitely want to highlight that they add a wealth of strengths and assets to our programs and to our communities. And we will talk a little bit about that, particularly with Ana Valeria and with Keomi, but others as well. And we also know that they are brilliant at learning languages. The younger the child is, the more genius they are at not only learning a first language, but developing a second language. All of our... We adults know how hard it is to kind of make that translation and to learn something new. But young children in particular are really great at learning multiple languages. And it gets their brains firing. And when they're supported, their development, not only dual-language development is associated with their outcomes, but actually is associated with better outcomes for all the children in the classroom. We want to stress that. So happy for that introduction. I know that Katie and Ingrid have entered some resources that we want you to be able to go to. And there'll be more coming. So you can scroll up and down the chat, and you will see what those resources are. So now I'll ask Katie that you bring down the slides. And all of our speakers will bring up your videos. Keep yourself on mute until I call on you. But if you wouldn't mind sharing your video cameras. And all of you in the audience, if you would place your view on speaker mode, you'll see all of us in gallery. But you'll also be able to see the speaker kind of predominant in your slides. So Alejandra, at this point, I want to introduce you. I'm so proud to do so. Alejandra came aboard as President of Highscope, beginning in the middle of September. But she came with a great deal of expertise on the ground in San Antonio as a principal of a hub of a couple of schools in San Antonio that we'll ask her to talk a little bit about. But I also would like to hear a little bit of her story and allow her to introduce Ana Valeria before I ask some questions of Ana Valeria. So Alejandra, please take it away.
Thank you so much, Jana. And thank you to all the participants for joining us this afternoon. So my name is Alejandra Barraza. I am the fifth president of the Highscope Educational Research Foundation. I am very proud and honored to be here to share some, you know, with Keomi, with Ana Valeria, some practitioners, and with Gloria, some of our experiences as dual-language learners. I myself, being born in Mexico, came to the United States when I was six years old and placed in a school that had not a single person who spoke Spanish. So I had to quickly learn. And all I can remember from that experience is a very, very caring first-grade teacher who understood that I had no clue what was going on, not even to go to the bathroom. I don't know why that really stayed in my head. But... And so I believe that it is so... It's so important that as teachers and as educators, we understand the stress that comes that comes along with being a dual-language learner. I also had the opportunity to be a teacher in a predominantly bilingual district in the San Antonio Independent School District, and also a principal, a network principal of two Head Start centers that had almost about a third of our classrooms are bilingual dual-language classrooms. Within that experience, and this is how I know Dr. Keomi Colgrove, I learned through her research about the importance of opening up our doors to our dual-language parents. And so my practice as an administrator really was impacted by her work and in understanding the strengths that our dual-language students bring to our schools. And so I also... Our San Antonio Hub of Excellence, our two schools that we have in the San Antonio Independent School District that currently we have a partnership in San Antonio and are adopting the Highscope curriculum. And our teachers are also going through the training of our preschool curriculum course. And with that, I am also honored to introduce Ana Valena Gonzalez, which is one of our teachers in our bilingual classrooms at Carol Early Childhood in San Antonio ISD. I'm also very happy to announce and proud to say that she is the recipient of the Jewel Sugarman Award. And this is an award that's given to the Head Start Educator of the Year for the city of San Antonio, which Ana Valena won this year. So with that, I turn it back to you, Jana. And I know there are some questions for Ana Valeria in regards to her experience as a practitioner in a dual-language classroom.
So thank you so much, Alejandra. For the larger audience, just as a reminder, Jewel Sugarman was one of the founders of Head Start during the Great Society programs under the auspice at the beginning of the Head Start program in the mid-'60s. So Ana, congratulations. That's an award that I know everyone in the surround is proud of you for, but one which you can certainly be proud of as well. I'm going to start with some questions, just kind of posing them so you can tell us a little bit of your story by starting with what is your first language?
My first language is Spanish. I was born in Mexico City. And, well, I actually went to a dual-language school in Mexico City, and that's how I acquired the English language.
Great, thank you. And I know, and I have been to both of the schools within the hub. Which school are you working in in particular? Are you working in both?
No, at Carol Early Childhood Center.
Okay. Alejandra, you may have mentioned that. If I forgot it, I'm sorry. So can you tell us a little bit about Carol, the percentage of the children there who are dual-language learners? And particularly, I know that you may have some responsibilities outside, but you also have inside-classroom responsibilities. So tell us a little bit about your children.
Correct. We always try to keep it at 50% of English learners in the classroom so that way the English learners can support the Spanish-speaking students, so they can support each other. And we try to pair them up so that the children can feel like the teachers in the classroom. They're the ones supporting each other back and forth. Our model is 80/20, where 80% of the class is conducted in Spanish and 20% in English. So you can see how the Spanish speakers, they play such a big role in our classroom, helping out the English speakers.
So the 80% is conducted in Spanish. And what percentage of the children are first languages English?
50%.
Yes, 50/50. So that's great. I have a great anecdote that I'd like to share, if you don't mind. I once heard the Director of the U.S. Department of Education, Office of English Language Acquisition, highlighting that his wife was a bilingual instructor. She happened to have a class full of 20 children, all of them learning English. And all of them were Spanish speakers, save one, who was Chinese and spoke Chinese. At the end of the year, this Director of English Language Acquisition was very proud to say that all of the children had met standard in their English language acquisition, including all of the Spanish speakers and the Chinese speaker. And the young Chinese boy also learned Spanish. So that's just a great anecdote and talks about the strength of bilingual education, right? So what do you think the biggest bonus is of being a part? What's the best thing about being a part of a bilingual classroom or having diverse learners in your classroom?
So we are teaching them to start looking at themselves as part of a global community. And we are broadening their worldview as they're learning about other cultures and they are acquiring knowledge about their classmates' traditions. And it helps them gain respect for others and value their own culture.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And what advice would you give to teachers who might not have some of the experiences that you have who don't speak the main language of the children in their classroom?
My advice to teachers is to get to know the students, their community, and their families. We have to learn their culture and learn about their language and its characteristics. Because when the students speak or write, they're going to be using these characteristics of their language. And as teachers, instead of seeing them as errors, teachers can use them as a learning tool to talk about the differences and similarities between their language and English. If teachers... As teachers, if we tell them that their speaking is not right, we are dismissing their culture. Instead, we need to value their language because it's the culture and linguistic wealth that they possess.
So Alejandra, I don't know if you would have anything to add in to what Ana Valeria addressed here. I have been in the classrooms at Carol and Tynan, and you see Spanish and English everywhere in those classrooms. Keomi, you may have been in those classrooms as well. So Alejandra, I'll give you an opportunity to pat Ana Valeria on the back.
Yes, and I think, you know, she's just... Just the fact that she won the award just speaks volumes about Ana Valena's work. But she was a teacher who was always reaching out to parents. So had a lot of parent communication, which... And also invited them in to do Read Alas, to share about their traditions they do at home. But what she really talks about embodies the... Really accepting their culture was something that she really practiced. Now, at our schools, at the hub of San Antonio, and we've also put the link to the chat so you all can follow up and learn more about the San Antonio hub. But it is a place that's not quiet. So you'll hear children at all times singing. And singing is such an important part of also learning language, both in English and Spanish. So you'll hear the songs as they're walking down the hallways. We do not want quiet classrooms. We really believe that children need to speak and not only to engage in language and to have those conversations with each other, but to learn from each other. But I think another important piece is the way, as an administrator, and I know I just stepped away from that role, but the administrator really sets the tone on how we view parents and our children and not having that deficit view. When we start seeing children as resilient, as bringing really a wealth of knowledge into our schools and our parents as well, then it changes the total dynamic at the school. We also have to understand that a lot of our parents, at times, have difficulty coming into our schools because they maybe did not have a great experience or because they're coming from another country. There might be immigrants. And so as school administrators, we need to be able to open up our doors to welcome our families and our parents into our schools.
Ana, anything else to add in there? I'm sure that you agree. And it is... I've been on your campuses. They are joyful, noisy places. And that's great.
Yes, and we also... I mean, that's something that I love about our school, that the parents feel like they can just... Well, we have our days when they can just come in our classroom and observe what it is that we do. And we want to make them feel as comfortable as they can and welcome, like welcoming. We're welcoming to all the parents.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. And that's a perfect segue to Keomi, who has done some research, both on bilingual and cultural education, but particularly around family engagement. So I have a couple of questions for her. And I also want to remind folks, it's not very easy to monitor the chat. So if you have specific questions or comments, please feel free to enter those. And we will take some time at the end of the session. If you will include those in the Q&amp;A button at the bottom of your screen, we'll be sure that we bring back that information during the Q&amp;A. So Keomi, and you don't mind, doc, it is doctor, but I will address you by first name. And I would like to start with a question for you. And first, tell us a little bit more about your research on bilingual and cultural education. That's your area of expertise. And... But particularly what you've learned about Latinx family, that is the Latinx is the largest component of the children, both in the hub, but also among our audience. But don't leave out the other languages as well and the strengths that they bring to the story.
Yes, thank you so much, Highscope, for inviting me. So I have the opportunity to share some of my research and work. Así que muchas gracias, Highscope, por invitarme a participar en este panel y tener la oportunidad de compartir mi trabajo con todos ustedes. I was a bilingual teacher and a preschool teacher. So when I started working with families, I kind of brought that wealth of knowledge and understanding and what in early childhood spaces means to engage parents and family and what it means their culture and who they are into the classroom. So that's something I did as a bilingual teacher. And one of the things that I noticed is a disconnect between the schools and the parents. And that what brought me into, actually, my research, understanding what are the preferences of Latinx immigrant parents in terms of curriculum and in terms of pedagogical practices, and also thinking about what are their preferences? So one of the things that I learned is that we really need to do a better job in inviting and engaging families. And with that said, and I think Ana Valeria and also Dr. Barraza talk about this, is actually getting to know them and getting to know their expertise and create a relationship with them. Because in my work, parents feel very responsible for participating in their children's lives. Because in my work, parents feel very responsible for participating in their children's education. I mean, out of all the interviews that I conducted and working with parents, nobody have ever said, I don't care about the education of my child or I don't care about these things. For the contrary, they're very committed to enhance their education and to help them and support them. So just like Dr. Barrasa said, sometimes there's a lack of understanding of the expectations of the school. And the other thing that we need to understand that many parents were immigrants, Latinx, but all their immigrant parents, they have never been inside of a US school. So they never went or attended a school. So to them, it's very unknown. So having the opportunities to open up the classrooms and allow them to see how instruction looks like and how a school are, I think it's very, very important in order to, to get them to know and understand better. Sometimes I feel like there's a lot of assumptions, and that's why I'm happy that you guys shared that article, assumptions about the families. And I feel like that creates frustration for teachers. But it's really like families are really willing and try to figure out different ways in which to help their children. And to give you an example, one of the conversations we were having is about homework. And many people think that parents don't help with homework. And I know something very trivial. All teachers will go through why they're not doing their homework, why they're not bringing their homework. And in talking to parents and all the interviews I have done, all the parents helped with homework. And they're very resourceful. They figure out Google Translate. They use dictionaries. They go and ask a neighbor. They ask their relatives. So there is a lot of things that parents do, not all the time. Unfortunately, they have the opportunity to converse with teachers and share the things they do. But most definitely, they're doing all sorts of things to, to support their children. And in terms of routines and, and things they do with them, particularly before the pandemic, all these type of things that parents actually were doing. Now, of course, it's a little more complex. But in terms of going to a library or to go out or do other things, but it's, it's very amazing. And the amount of things that families are actually doing with their children.
Thank you. We did see that we have a number of directors, principals and teachers who are English first language. And what advice might you offer them to make their classrooms and their settings welcoming, in particular, to teachers? Obviously, they may not be able to speak Spanish. But how to engage families across those language barriers or how to overcome some of the perceived barriers?
Yes, Jenna, that's so interesting you ask that. Because one of the things that I noticed through conversations with parents or when we were having these focus groups interviews, one of the things they said that many times people did not speak Spanish, particularly my population, because I was working with Latinx parents. So one of the things they mentioned, even when principals want to speak the language, they see the willingness to communicate. So parents perceive the desire of administrators to communicate through things like having somebody from the office, administrative people who can help to translate a conversation with the principal. Some principals start actually learning, or directors, they start learning Spanish. And they will start having small conversations with families. And parents saw that we all attend for administration to learn Spanish and attempt to actually communicate. So knowing that they don't know the language, they're not bilingual in the language of the community, they found people within the staff that can actually support and help them. The other thing is, and it's like the welcoming part, like you know, like when you have a friend and you know when your friend is happy to see you, you know that because the way they look at you, the way they open the door, and you feel like welcome. And sometimes when you don't feel welcome, you know that, you can feel it. Parents have the same, and they talk about when they felt welcome. It's the way that they were having things set up, the spaces. Like Dr. Barrasa said, she actually implemented a time that actually parents can come and see the classroom and get to see how instruction was done. And that was an amazing thing for families, because many of them, and actually I got to interview some of her families, many of them never been in a school. So there's different ways, I think, that are very subtle, and they're not like a checklist. You know, there's a lot of things, what are we doing with parents? And we have checklists. It's not like that, but it's really like this relationship. And actually, the willingness. So parents see the willingness and the desire to build a relationship. And that is something that cannot be taught. I think it's something that people have to feel that is important to do. And so it might seem simple, but it's not that simple because you're really feeling that this relationship is important. So I'm spending time to get to know the families, all of them, and finding ways in which to include them. And so engaging in that conversation, dialogue, seeking their expertise, building a relationship is really what is crucial. I think especially for people who are an administrator that have this opportunity to actually do stuff like that and change policies within the school to make people feel welcome.
Yes, I, thank you so much. That was really important. I got from you not only translation, that's a very important communications tool that directors, teachers, when they can bring that in. Anna Valeria, you're doing that in your classroom with your paired colleague, right? But the idea of maybe learning some of the language of the families that you're engaged with is, will take it a long way to build that relationship, right?
Yeah, I wanted to share really that what Dr. Colgrove was mentioning, that what we do call open classrooms was a result of her research. So we brought it back to Carol in saying, because through her research, we learned that parents felt that they didn't know what was going on in the classroom. So in February, we opened up the doors for two weeks for parents to come in for thirty to forty-five minutes. And I have to say, Anna Valeria would always have a hundred percent of the parents come in. But that also required the teacher to be proactive in going out and searching the parents and opening up the door. So wanted to give a shout out to both of them for that.
No, that was, that was a phenomenal idea. And actually, having conversation with parents was something that was so helpful. Because we don't think that they don't know how a school is. But in the interview with parents, the educational experiences of immigrant parents from all over are just very different than what is going on in the US. And I feel like the expectations of the school about their role in the education of their children is very different too. So there's stuff that I don't think we think so deeply, but these are really important things that can change the trajectory of these relationships in a really positive way.
Thank you.
And I just wanna, oh, sorry. I just wanna add that Kiomi, like she helped me guide. Well, her and I, like we talked about, like coming up with questions to ask parents to get to know them. Because as for right now, the challenge was to get to know our students that are from home. And for Head Start, every year, we need to do a home visit. So we just want to take that opportunity to get to know the parents, build a relationship with them. So Dr. Colgrove was kind enough to help me, and she helped me come up with questions. So we can do, we want to say it's an interview, but we want to make it seem more like a, just like a conversation where we, like, let the parents know it's okay to open up, like we make them feel comfortable and share with, share their customs, their traditions and things they do on a daily basis, weekly basis, because that's their culture and that's how we're gonna get to know our students.
So thank you, all three of you. You know, hailing from Texas, Alejandra is currently in Texas. We have a few questions already. I'm gonna hold those questions, particularly around working with non-English family, non-English speaking families and children in time of COVID, which I know, Kiomi, you have written a little bit about. But I want to give Gloria an opportunity to respond to the three that came before. And also Gloria, if you wouldn't mind telling us a little bit about your story, your organization that you are providing leadership for. And maybe, we all think we know California, but maybe you can inform us a little bit about how things are going in California. So goes the rest of.
Thank you, Jenna, and thank you for having the opportunity to speak on this critically important conversation and issue. As I spent my last twenty-five years in education, fourteen of which have been in early childhood, really looking at this question of how best to ensure that we, as a system of educators, really think about supporting the wellbeing and the, and the, and the continued learning of, of young children, regardless of their home language, status, immigration status, because they are children. That's who they are. And children are universally magical beings. And so I don't need to tell you what the research tells us about that in terms of how we as adults navigate and provide the, the learning opportunities in terms of environments and supporting curiosity that really enable them to do what every child does. Similarly, just piggybacking on what Kiomi was sharing, and what do we as adults and educators, what do we do to continue to support what every parent wants to do, regardless of their language or their immigration status, which is around supporting their child's learning as their child's first and most important teacher. And so I, I say that because I feel that part of the conversation that, that today's conversation that really excites me in the context of, of the book around, you know, anti-bias, is that the, in order for us to implement successful strategies, my experience is that we first have to look at our own biases. What are we as our own, as adults, as educators, as people who went and got trained to do this work? What were those assumptions about what children can do? What are our role in facilitating those abilities and facilitating those dialogues with families? And I think that's a really important jumping off point. I was, I was checking out the questions, and it's about what are some strategies that work? I think one of the big takeaways, especially in COVID, the work that we've been doing in California and across the state, really has been reaching out to families because it's a parent empowerment model, evidence-based model, that takes the idea that we're discussing here about families and parents really being their child's first and most important teacher from early childhood through college completion and workforce participation, through an evidence-based approach that supports and encourages an adult's ability, the parent's ability to advocate on behalf of their children to really access high-quality educational opportunities in a, in a, in a school setting or in whatever setting right, right now, it's on a home setting for obvious reasons. So, but I think there's two really important takeaways that we've seen from, certainly from our, from our work in California and across the country, vis a vis really looking at bias and the importance of, of having now, I think, a really frank conversations about things like what is the dominant language and the language of power? And what's the dominant culture and the cultural power? And I think that's a really different way of looking at creating environments for young children and their families. Because the dominant language and the language of power is English. And therefore, all of us were trained that our ability to speak and navigate the English language was where we sat in the hierarchy of power. And so I think this is a really important time for each of us to ponder that question and say, what, what does that mean vis a vis how I interface with my teachers? If I'm a director, that I interface with the families, if I'm a teacher or a director, if I assume that the, that the language of power is English, right? And so I think humility and, and curiosity is, in some ways, what I heard Kiomi and Anna Valeria really talk about. What can I do to make an environment welcoming for children and families? How am I using, you know, we talk about the environment being the third teacher, right, in a lot of ways? How is the environment reflecting the strength and the assets that children bring, right? And it could be everything from translating, you know, having, having just good practices, like labeling in multiple languages, which now can be done much more easier, more easily, right? But it's thinking about what, what assumptions am I making as the educator in creating this environment? What assumptions am I making? What questions am I asking a parent about their experience and how they can contribute to the wellbeing and the enrichment of, not of, not of them, but of us, right? How can they educate me so that I am better prepared, so that I can keep learning? So I would offer that is really like, and we start inwardly and thinking about what's my own bias? What, what expectations do I have about what the other? And that could be, you know, there could be five languages or five cultures. What are my expectations? And what do I know about them? And if I know nothing about, you know, Sudanese culture, then maybe I should start by doing a Google search, right? And, you know, educating myself in those respects. I think the, the second thing that I would offer vis a vis my own experience and just the work that we've been, that I've done over the last twenty-five years, is that someone, someone in the chat said, you can't fake caring. That's right, you can't. I also think it's true, though, that it's important to understand our journey around ignorance, right? And so what that really means is that by understanding that we have to continue to learn, that opens us up as educators, as, as people that speak the dominant language, to actually understand the journey that families are experiencing and that children are experiencing. So to Kiomi's, Kiomi's point about, right, about there being sort of the openness and the resourcefulness that families exhibit and our ability to understand that resourcefulness. When they don't turn in a homework assignment that's finished, right? Because they couldn't find that resource, it's asking a question, what, instead of the question being, why didn't you turn it in? Is, you know, in my, in my experience, it's been, what did you do? You know, tell me how you got to where you got to and how, what other things might have you, you know, have you elevated for that child or for that community? And so it's about asking and pondering those kinds of questions. Certainly, my own, my own experience, I'm a mother of two young children that you might see popping in here any minute. I think my final thought is that, you know, this issue around dual language, children and families tended to be like a Texas thing or a Florida thing or a California thing. In California, over fifty percent of our children under five are Latinx. And Jenna, as you said, as California goes, so does the country. And I think that what that means is that our education and our training hasn't reflected that reality. And so I would urge everyone that's sitting here, all five hundred and ninety-four of you, is to really ponder your, you know, kind of how do we take this, this notion of really thinking through our, how we were trained, what we're learning, what we're reading? Because this isn't a California or Texas or Florida or New York thing, right? Thirty percent of children under four in Colorado are Latinx, right? Twenty-five percent of them in Iowa are Latinx, right? And so when you think about homogeneity and what diversity means, it's understanding that this isn't a child or a family, it's how do we embrace, embrace the assets that come with diversity in whatever form, whether they have special learning needs, whether they eat differently, whether it's religion, whether it's, you know, family structure. I think for me, what this conversation really is, is about how do we embed assets that come with the uniqueness of family into the environment that educators create, that leaders and, and directors create, which are very tangible. We have to behave differently if we're going to embrace new practices.
I love the way you started with kind of turning the power on its head. I'm kind of looking at the four of you who I are, were, you know, English was not your first language and recognizing that as an extremely powerful attribute that you all four have. And it blows my, you know, I have difficulty acquiring language. So I admire your skill set and your capacity to cross those cultural lines. But I love Gloria that you brought us back to don't look away, to really investigate our own biases in dealing with the families and children that we see on a daily basis.
So thank you. I, we do have some questions in the chat box. Some of them are the same or similar. I want to make sure that we take the final ten minutes to see if we can respond to those. And there are a couple about, and I know, Kiomi, that you began to address, how we're all zooming in from the same space, right? We are all at home today in some way. Alejandra has the Hutchinson house at Highscope behind her, but, but she's zooming in from her office or living room as well. So what are some of the resources and the cultural distance that can be traveled in this virtual environment? Some tips, some pointers that you may have found that you can offer to folks? And I'll open that up to everybody. Ana Valeria, let's start with you, and I want to point out the video that was included, because there's a lot of information there. So things that you've learned to kind of broach the distance for both of the languages spoken in your classroom?
Well, it was through the interviews that I started learning more about my students. And I'll just share something really quick. I did notice that in the beginning of a school year, it was, this, this year has been like no other. Like last year, we continued, we started the virtual learning, but we already knew the students. But this year, we were starting from scratch, like they, the students didn't know me, I didn't know the students. So they were shy in the beginning, not speaking, so I just couldn't get much out of them. And the moment that I called the parents and I had, I had that conversation with them, I learned so much about them and everything that, like everything about their culture, their traditions. And I included that into my lessons. And I did, like, whenever we went back on Zoom, I did mention like, oh, I, I know this student, like, she had chickens as pets. Like, I know she enjoys going outside and playing with chickens. So what I did is I created a lesson where we were like measuring like horn, because she liked to feed the chickens. And that moment, you can just see her face like light up. And like, I noticed that ever since that moment, I got more language out of her. Not only that, but I got a video from her mom, and she was like guiding the activity. And it was really nice to see all the language she had that I really hadn't discovered before. And that was like really nice. And it was just through learning about them and digging into their funds of knowledge. I know someone typed it in the chat, and that was part of my special project for my masters, which Kiomi, like helped me guide the questions that I had for the parents.
That's awesome, and thank you for describing that. In so many ways, you all are engaged almost on a daily basis on conducting home visiting with your children. So you're meeting with families there in the background much more than they would be in your classrooms. Kiomi, would you like to address that? And actually, I think that Ingrid or Katie may have shared a resource for you written recently. And we'll share, we'll pull that up and share that again. But Kiomi, can you address some advice?
We actually created, I don't know, like, it's not like a guideline, but we created a document that actually support teachers and support families and with our research team and proposing a lot of ideas that actually families can do at home, and also that things that teachers can do or guide or kind of share some tips with parents. We actually worked on that really at the beginning of the pandemic, so it's been a much longer time. And one of the things is that those are some that might be accessible ideas. I was thinking a lot about like oral development and thinking about providing a lot of opportunities for children to talk and to participate. So I kind of point out a couple things from that, kind of like within the whole guideline, those kind of things. And, and one is that for parents particularly, if they feel comfortable doing something and they have a lot of knowledge doing something, whatever that is, to pass it only to the children and do those things together. If it's gardening, if it's cooking, if it's making something, just having and spending a lot of time together, telling stories, storytelling. I remember as a child, my parents didn't read books to me, but they did tell me a lot of stories. So I, I do still remember those. And in these times, that sometimes you cannot go to the library, or basically you like to tell stories, you just share a lot of storytelling with children. And I think in some cultures more than others, we don't use a lot of text, we tell more stories. So we're storytelling. And the other thing is let children tell you stories. So let them participate with you in activities, allow those spaces now to be like a child center to kind of like having them to participate. But one of the things that is so important is understanding that children learn best, by be like embodied learning, by doing, by participating, by smelling, by touching, by moving, by yelling, by all those things that we know children do through curiosity, through their interest, right? And, and understanding, understanding that, that that's kind of like the way children learn. And, and I think those, those things are important, because sometimes I feel in these time trends, I'm feeling very guilty, that frustrated themselves too. There's a lot going on that to feel bad about their, their role in at this moment. So I think encouraging and listening to them. Ana Valeria was saying, having phone calls, call them to say something good about your child, engage with them about those things. And the other thing is don't make up stuff, because we parents know our kids. So if you said too many good things that are not true, we know. So just keep it simple, but just having an opportunity to share something about the child that, that parents know. And, and that really creates a bond, because like feeling these times, people are so isolated, that it's important to know that we're working in a partnership together.
So thank you so much, Kiomi and Ana Valeria, for that. Ana Valeria, a question for you in particular, perhaps for both of you, since it was part of a master's project. We can't obviously share the questions that were used for the interviews, but they, we may be able to share after, if you could, if you wouldn't mind providing a few examples of those. We'll make sure that the audience receives those.
Not at all. Do you want me to share them through a document or verbal, like?
Um, because we're so limited on time, let's ask if you could share the questions in a document to Ingrid, myself, Alejandra, anyone? Don't, we don't want to add extra work to you, but we'll make sure that the audience receives those questions.
Of course, I will, definitely.
Thank you. You know, we only have a few minutes left, and I know that we won't get to all of these questions, but there may be some resources that we can provide additionally to respond to some of the questions that were in the box. I want to give Gloria a final opportunity, maybe to ask the others a question if you have one. And if not, that's fine.
I think the, the one thing that I would say is, that I'd be curious about is, what would you suggest as, as you think about our, our work ahead? Might be a question that you have asked yourself to think differently about, whether it's an issue or a question that you keep circling back to with respect to your own assumptions? I think that would be really helpful. I think Ana Valeria and Kiomi, and Alejandra, all, all of us are non-native English speakers. And so I think that there's something about our own assumptions walking into an education structure that was already different. I think for those of our listeners and our audience for whom, who are homogeneous in their, in their home, in their language, is there a question or is, is there a practice? Or is an issue that you would suggest that they ponder perhaps a little bit deeper or differently as they, as they walk away from this conversation?
I, I would like to say that I always, when I moved here, I was, everything was new. So one of the things that I felt for the families, particularly the students that I taught, was the idea that, to me, parents have children. When I started being a teacher, I didn't know how my own child. But I always felt that children are the most precious thing a parent has. So my thought was, if these families are coming to my classroom, they're giving me the most precious thing they have. It's kind of my job to create a relationship and make sure that they trust me. So that was to me, one of the important things that, as a teacher. As I said, I was a preschool teacher, I work in centers, I work in preschools, I work with kids from one and a half all the way to sixth grade. And now I work with college students, fun. So anyway, the little ones are way more fun. But anyway, so my thing was, I'm giving, these, these families are giving me their children. The least I can do is to make sure that they trust me and they know that I have the best interest. So that to me came natural, as I need to build a relationship with them, and they need to get to know me. And if you have seen my name, it's Kiomi, my other last name is Santi Suzuki, my last name is Colgrove. So who is this chick? So my job was really to make sure they get to know me. So that relationship and that trust and that respect was really important to me as a, as a, an immigrant teacher in the United States, but also as a teacher who really cared deeply about early childhood education in China.
So thank you so much, what a wealth of information. It is the three o'clock hour, and I want to honor everybody's time, particularly our panelists today, and to thank you for them. Katie or Ingrid, maybe we can pull up the last slide. Keep your faces on the screen so we can say goodbye and feliz Navidad as well. We, this session has been recorded and will appear on the Highscope YouTube channel. So you will be able to find it on both the website and beyond. We will be continuing the conversation with authors and other experts around family engagement. We'll engage Bonnie, another board member as a respondent in our January session. You can now find the full schedule of all of the previous recordings, plus the upcoming sessions on the Highscope website. I wanted to remind you that you will be receiving a certificate and want to give a big, huge shout out to everyone for your attention and for your thoughtful questions that you posed. Thank you to our panelists and for the resources and for the insights that they shared with you. I'm walking away knowing the power of language, multiple languages, and the importance of how starting younger and addressing young learners is a really important pursuit that we are all in together. So thank you very much. Have a happy holiday in whatever language you celebrate it and in whatever way that you celebrate it. Thank you to everybody.